Okay.
I'll make sense.
I've got them both covered. One term you vote. Transferred over to which is for your mentor.
Well, actually, I'm a Portland State guy, so. But, so when I first got hired here, Weaver cornered me. You gotta make a choice. Weaver or duck?
No, come on Viking.
No, 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 no. That does not count anymore. Weaver or duck? And he was relentless. You know how Weaver is. And of course with Weaver, there's only one choice too.
That's why Henry Ted has got the Weaver shirt on.
I'm gonna be at the end of a conference. Steph got a phone call, her voicemail message from Cindy, and I called her back today.
I said, well, actually, I had it on my head.
So I've got it on my calendar for Friday. That's a reminder, yeah. Make sure it was on the right calendar this time.
Okay, just checking.
Yep.
Yeah, now I'm calling for April fourteenth.
Are we ready to get going here?
Uh, I'm just kinda waiting for.
That's okay.
Do you have anything to sort of powerpoint wise, no?
Nope.
Okay.
That's okay.
Is there a PowerPoint? There is not. No PowerPoint, yeah.
Do we have to get up and stuff?
Yes, Maria, yeah.
And we had to go on a walking tour and see.
So you're saying you can point down.
I didn't know that you architects still.
Don't squabble. Oh, this is iconic. It's funny, when I got out of school, very first thing I learned was how to do a full archer. Like, Peter, and the whole profession of building. Can't, so this was all CNC. We actually, we built this model twice because the team made a mistake. So, that happens, part of life.
Runway, runway.
And this is why I do not do jigsaw talkies, because I didn't know what set one of you did.
Alright.
Wow, that is heavy, that is heavy. It's up there. You got it?
Alright.
Now it's good.
Place all the country, so.
Lost a tree!
We've lost a few.
You have a press.
Windstorm. Natural causes.
There you go.
Superset everything. The city bar.
That one's.
Fire station?
Yep.
And that's all they put in there, these big red colors. It's the stupidest looking thing I've ever seen. They just stay there.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready for you now. Alright, let's call this meeting the order in City of Lincoln City Works Association for March 5th, 2018. It is now 6:38 PM. We're here to discuss the police facility project preliminary design presentation and who's taking notice.
So I'll give a brief intro, but it's gonna be the architect show on here. So, purpose of this meeting is to have a discussion on various site placements. What I mean by site placements is how the building would be sited upon the property. One of the challenges, for lack of a better term, is to position the new building in a manner that while it's being constructed, we can still get in and out of the old building. We've looked around for other properties. Purchasing other properties would increase the cost of the project in the old and stuff, so. We feel that's the most economical approach is to take a look at the site that we currently have first and see what we can do with that before we look elsewhere. And it's really not our intent to look elsewhere. The architects have came up with some options. We wanted to run those options, pass up the council to get feedback and discussion on that. Obviously, we can't make any decisions, but we are certainly looking for guidance and your input on this. So, with that, I'll turn this over to Ian with FFA Architecture.
Actually, Chief, can we do roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do that at work session?
No, we, yeah, but we didn't.
Okay, guys, if we do a quorum, so we'll start it here at the far end. You just introduce yourself.
Kalen Berry with FFA Architecture.
Ian Gilbert with FFA Architecture.
Judy Gaspere.
Deanna Hinton.
Kathy Steer, city recorder.
Dick Anderson.
Don Williams.
Susan Waki.
Keith Killian.
David Dwyer with the classroom.
Thank you. Anyone else who's gonna be typing in?
Deborah Nicholson, senior planner.
Richard Towson, planning director.
Sarah Pauling.
Okay, so, I don't need to introduce much. Chief did a great job of setting the stage for us. This will be more of an active presentation. We'll probably need you to get up out of your seats just to be able to see what we presented. The point of this is to present options to you about where the building's gonna be sited. Primarily because we don't wanna go down a road, pick one thing without input and go down the road and develop it and find out we've got the wrong solution. So, what we're going to do here is walk through sort of the general requirements, both we talked about relative to project goals, the site, and some of the program things that we've talked about just briefly. And then dive into the specific options, both up here on the wall as well as here on a model. So Kalen, do you wanna talk through the general? Everyone see that? This may be the part where everyone needs to skip it out.
Kind of like tucked behind the column, but over here, we kind of have a synopsis of the different discovery exercises made during the research phase. So, with the community, with please, you all, so this is kind of taken into what the project goals were, what the community wanted to see out of this building, kind of a synthesis of our site research. So like climate data, site access, adjacent uses, those kind of things. And then a kind of synthesis of the different program pieces that are input to the project. Both where they were estimated originally and after reprioritizing sizing and what things were wanted and changes that were made through that exercise. So, yeah.
So relative to that, I think the key things to focus on right now are the site diagrams. Is that one of those? We have the wetlands kind of at the bottom of the hill that sort of come in and they type back to be like, you have a sort of heavenly forest division around the site here. And then obviously, a whole lot of topography, which we just put them all over there. The other key aspects beyond the solar orientation wise, but primarily the site access is really challenged because the way that the site's been developed is one sort of narrow strip of flat, basically, for us to work from. And that flat is pinched at the end. And so, for us to be able to get a very defined public area, a very defined private or secure area is a little bit challenging. And where we position the building is gonna help define that. In addition, looking for two ways out of the secure parking lot, that's a key thing for us to consider. Just to make sure it's a secure design point. So.
Some of the other issues with site too, was looking at, not the adjacent uses, looking at issues presented by having the storage units so close to the site and to the flat area in particular of the site. The flat area that doesn't contain the existing building. And what security risks does this PD?
Did you not open this file? Yeah. That's a much better talking point than me staring at the board. Should've slid it down. Sort of.
Alright.
So, option one.
So, option one is looking at trying to separate the entrances with such an alter key. This option is also assuming that the city park is moving forward and trying to share parking amenities and the whole advantage of what could be the theme for park. We're also trying to maintain the existing building and the ease of access to this building during construction by tucking it behind, the new construction behind. So, in this option, if the park is here, we're proposing that they could share this parking amenity between the public side of the PD up here and the park here. And the secure access would be down below, completely separate, separate color from the. Like the steam building's right here. So, once that's demolished, this area will become a secure parking.
So you can see it. Right, so you can see it better here. Go ahead, the right one.
Yes.
So, if this is our existing building here, then here's the existing parking, fire station's there, post office is here, public boards is over here, and that and whatnot. So, the biggest challenge is, there's a couple. One is the slope, two is keeping the existing building in place. And so, being able to position the building in such a way that we get a secure side and a public side. Because the amount of space in the building that's dedicated to public use is really small. And so, and we wanna isolate it. So, in doing this way, which gives us kind of a stepped option, we follow the grade of the building. We very carefully target where our stairs and elevators are to put them as centrally located as possible. So, from a fire standpoint, we have one exit out this way, we have another exit down and out that way for staff. And then we keep all the secure functions of the solid port and holding and control down at the lower level so it's kind of outside of where the public are on a regular basis. It also locates most of that to this side, which is kind of the secure side of the site. Because in essence, we don't really have a back door to the site. So the city park is here and the parking's over here. We've gotta establish where that secure zone's gonna be and where we wanna have protected views and things from inside the building. So, the challenges of this particular option is that you don't own all the parcels up here. Right, so there's, there are, right, there's a skinny, series of skinny lots that go right along that.
It's really, I think, maybe three, right? They're forty feet, feet off heel.
And so.
And they're valued rather low by the county, like five thousand, six thousand dollars.
And they're not developed well.
No.
But they actually can't be developed, right? They could, you could.
Well, they could be.
They could be, okay.
Because they're planted lots.
Okay, but they're not of a limited size that somebody couldn't, this is uncode allows for something to be on.
Even though they're too small for a standard lot.
So, that's a little bit of luck, obviously. So, we came up with one B.
Yes, so this is looking at, this is more of a, closer to a true two-story option, where we would locate a similar scheme out in front of the existing building. The concern with this is maintaining access to their building during construction. There is a little bit of clearance here, but it will, it'll change operations during construction. It'll require some adoptions you will be able to skirt through, but it does limit access to, to the site significantly during construction. But this allows you to capitalize on areas that you do own along this street here. So you could still potentially have a more of a public address along, is this ninth?
Ninth.
Yeah, along ninth. And have your secure parking then located behind the building. So if you're driving. And this becomes your secure parking. So, one advantage to this option is you're still kind of separating the public and the private with topography. Also, it has more of a relationship to the fire station so that there's a little bit of communication with, between the two. And then also, as you're driving up, the building has more of a presence. Instead of being tucked back into the trees, there is a little bit more of a public address as you turn it off of East Double Lake or off of Ninth. You're seeing this public portion of the building as the first thing you see.
Is that what you mean by public address, they can see it? Yep. Okay, and communication means they can see each other? Yeah, it's a relationship. Trying to tell each other or?
No, not, not an actual verbal communication, but just a, there was some interest in having a public campus feel so that the public amenities of the police station and the fire station were connected in some way instead of two separate, completely separate entities. So these ones, at least they're in somewhat close proximity to each other. And then, there is kind of a nice aspect of the secure parking being tucked behind that would just kind of, the park would just need to be designed in such a way that you're not coming up on all the secure parking and seeing this giant wall or fence or whatever it is, but.
This one also gives you the option for a drive-through sound.
Yes.
Is that here?
A what? Drive-through sound.
It could be right here, so getting their drive around back to the parking or through the sound.
So, relative to.
We reduce our packing costs. They backed out, running string.
It's the way to save our building costs. So, in here, though, this will be public parking? And how many spaces are you predicting there? Do you do a quick sketch of that?
I mean, it's, it would meet the programming totals that keep, or that Jim worked on, but it's.
How many do you have here now?
Twenty maybe, yeah.
So it'd be about something similar to that.
And I think you needed.
Because we were talking about putting a public meeting area there. That you don't have, so if you're gonna encourage more people to show, is there gonna be parking available?
Yes, there, the parking was programmed to meet the needs of the, that public space.
I think so, I think that inherently you, you don't get one car per every seat that you have in the moment in the public meeting space, but you do as close as you can. So the flip side of the, the other issue about when the secure parking up here goes away, you still have to develop a second access out. And so that's gonna be part of the conversation with, when you are working on the park. Is that programming an emergency exit only for PD which maybe ninety, ninety-nine percent of the time operates as a walking path or something else like that, but in that one emergency, when something has happened out here and it's blocked access, you've got another way.
Which you don't have.
We don't.
It's kind of an issue with almost all the schemes, just the nature of the site being pinched back here.
Any questions relative to this before we move on to Kalen?
So this part is actually at grade.
Yeah.
I mean, so that's, okay, so.
It would be sort of.
Yeah, so this, this part would be on grade up here. And this is, this could be a portion that has like a bit of a public plaza that comes in on here. And then, everything else would be.
I have a question of those two guys. Driving around the building, and I.
During construction.
Only call, you know, the secure parking is over here. Then, and even after construction, they're still gonna have to drive around the building to park, isn't that right?
Yes.
So how does that work when you have to get somewhere fast, whereas now, you just drive down? Is that gonna cause any issues?
So, my guess would be that during whatever shift is working, that the cars may not be actually, for the working officers, they may not be tucked in the back. They'll probably be closer to the front so they can get out in a more expeditions manner. That would be secure parking for employees, the remainder of the vehicles that were not using it at that particular shift.
As long as that doesn't conflict with like, if you have the meeting, you know, neighborhood meetings there, you have twenty cars there, and then you have to run out.
The expectation I would have too, at facilities we've seen before, is even if we use the drive-through solid port, end up in secured parking, but we're still on duty, if we have to leave, it's going to be a sensor activated gate. So as soon as we pull within a certain amount of feet, the gate's gonna open automatically for us on our exit.
Yeah, and actually, I think it was, was it Candy Police Department that we looked at? They actually had a button inside the building that they hit the button and started that gate opening even before they got out to the parking lot.
And so that's if you have to go out this other way all the way to park?
That would, that would just be an emergency. So this would be your normal access.
So where's the gate then then?
It would be somewhere.
You'd have two, you'd have one sort of either here or on here. So that on a regular basis, if patrol's coming out this way, the gate opens and they go. And you'd have one that wouldn't be used very often for the facility.
So your, your normal way in and out would be here, not out this way? And then, you'd have gated access to get through this drive aisle back to here.
I think so, how wide is that?
Well, it, it would be wide enough to be a drive.
There's also a door. So I think that.
Oh, no, you wait, what?
It'd be twenty, twenty-six, twelve inches. So I think.
I don't want him to get pinned in.
Right, and I think where this ends up sitting in here is still up for play.
Yes.
I think we would, obviously, again, to push it back this way as much as we are allowed to, given that we have some standoff from these, these two parcels.
Yeah.
But, I think the, the challenging aspect is during construction. We were designing it such a way that it's not a daily headache for them, once the building's completed.
Yeah, well, yeah, once it's completed, there'll be.
Okay, and you know my concern about earthquakes and that, and that if that's right by the wetland, that's just gonna, you know, drop. It's gonna perhaps even liquefy. But you would know more about that depth than I do, but what. I can't predict that. Well, some of it we can predict, and that's. Well, I can't, I'm saying I can't. Some, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're gonna rely on these guys to be first responders for a lot of reasons and earthquakes gonna be a bit worse.
What I would say relative to that is if soil testing gives us guidance about how to structure the building so it doesn't go.
As long as it didn't go through that solid port, then.
You mentioned something, a concern backing the secure parking next to the park. How big a concern is it, the look, is it the safety?
So what I would say relative to that is that most public safety buildings have a front door and a back door, just like your home, right? On your front porch and you have your backyard. And so, the rationale is it's a backyard you want sort of kind of a secure remainder. And so there's two things about it. One, this is now a public face to the building. And so we have to design it such a way that it doesn't look like it's that affordable, right? In addition to that, we wanna make sure that however we're, we're designing this backside, that offices and things along here feel, feels odd, odd work, but they feel secure for the people who are in that building. Right now, you guys have, actually have great views out of your office, your office, and the conference room. Conference room blinds always down because people generally aren't sure who, who's out there in the trees. And so, it's, it's how we position windows and how we think about that to maximize the desire to keep the windows open.
It's my only question, and I know this is really late in the game, but touch it is. Can you, two and a half acres, right?
A little less, I think it was two point two or something.
Let's just say two and a half just for argument's sake. There is nowhere else in the city that has two and a half acres that would not present all these challenges. We could sell the land. Is there no other place in the city so we don't have to do all this?
I think you can use this land. Restrictions on it.
Turn it into a beautiful park, I guess. Alright, well, if we're stuck with it, we're stuck with it, but it just seems a lot of hoops for, just because we got this land here. I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm looking at the people who know all of our land in town.
You know, just about every place in town's gonna be topographically challenging. Anything that's not built on right now is not built on for a good reason, really.
And that includes the villages?
Villages isn't the only for it.
I think, I, I would.
That's probably the wrong end of town too.
I was gonna say.
I'm just asking about land right at this point.
Actually, we did look at the villages and our concern was it's primarily gonna be a residential area. So you don't wanna put this type of facility in a residential area. Still have limited ways of getting in and out.
Will you get to playing rock music all night long or? I'd love to have you in my, next to my house.
Until, until the sirens start screaming at one AM, three AM, seven AM.
They're doing it anyway, I found out one a lot here in LA.
But they're not all ours. Out of the villages, they'd be all ours. We can't blame the fire department. And, and your building is, is located at one extreme end of the city rather than this location which is centrally located. So, you can get to both ends of town. And, yeah, central location's very ideal for this.
Okay, well, let us present the other two options and then we can always put things back on here and revisit it. So, the next question was, well, can we just sit on the flat portions of the site? Someone has already cleared this portion, can we use that piece and just stay so we don't have to dig or build on the apartment in some way? And keep the building, the existing building where it is for the short term? So, we can put this option, which ends up being kind of this long skinny bar. And, the, there's a couple things about it. One, the orientation is challenging from daylighting. And so what we end up getting is blasted by west sun and the sun setting and the morning light coming this way. So, we end up wanting to, as architects, close down those sides and open up as much as we can to the north, hence the roof forms that we're planning on. In addition, we're awfully close to that street and we're awfully close to this piece that you don't own. And we've gone back and forth, we've talked a lot about whether or not this is really our concern. And I think the general consensus amongst ourselves and the chief and others is that it is, that not having control of this puts the building in somewhat of a.
It's a storage area.
Yeah, but I guess, you know, you know, we're fortunately, we're, but I'm thinking of cities, you know, whether it's Newport or, you know, Salem, the police station's right downtown. So, you know, you don't have, if, if you're looking at the space between, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the concern, safety concern is of, of a storage versus.
Well, so the storage is, there's inherently, people are coming in and out storing stuff. We can't control what they're gonna store as opposed to like Newport, that they're, they are in the downtown area, but they can see what's going on around them. And, and it's not a, their neighbors aren't a type of facility that encourages bulk, bulk storage or storing of whatever it could be versus an office. Yes, yes. Or a store, or a library, or something. Center, you know, that type of thing where it's more typical business in and out type thing versus storage. And then also, I believe Carson Fuel, that was right around there too.
Again, about the previous designs had it sitting.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, that distance and stuff, but it's just a concern. And you're, you're not gonna make any one building design a hundred percent secure, but there's, you know, certain risks that you may wanna take, may not wanna take on.
Quick question on that front. Displaying my ignorance here, I've never heard of a police station being attacked. Does it happen? What, what was, what's a normal, someone breaking, stealing stuff or attacking people?
No, there's been people shooting at police stations, I think there's been bombing.
There's been attempted running of vehicles into the police buildings themselves. But even as late as last year, there was a police department in Dallas that was shot up.
Does any of that affect what you're talking about though? I mean, we treat, all we treat is like, has it stopped?
Trees and stuff?
Yes, well, I'm just trying to figure, you're talking about the security of, because it's close to Carson Oil or something like that.
Right, 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 yes.
If any of that stopped.
Okay, so if we're, if, if we plant our building within a couple hundred feet of Carson Oil on those fuel tanks and somebody decides to go ahead and sabotage them, okay, that takes out our building.
And our emergency operations.
He's talking about the storage facility is, is the same type of issue. I mean, granted, we understand, we live in, in idyllic area compared to most of the country. When you watch the trends that are going on around the world right now as far as sabotage and attack, and in our country particularly directed at.
and attack, and in our country particularly directed at government and particular law enforcement, I think it is prudent for us to take into consideration the remote possibility that somebody could use one of these facilities to disable our building. I just think we're so excited if we don't realize that that is within the realm of policy.
On the first station that I worked on, which was the one in McMinville, I kinda had a similar mentality. I was like, how real really is that threat? And then midway through that project is when somebody drove through the courthouse in Salem. They drove their four by four, the front steps.
That was scary.
Is that okay?
I kinda like the shape of this building. It could be like a caterpillar or something.
Well, and so there's some inherent challenges in that too, which, I, we got kind of excited about the scheme, but what's the distance from?
That's almost three hundred feet.
Yeah, that's.
We can get our car, you'll end up.
Steps in.
This, this heat was really trying to meet the, keep it to one story, keep it only to the flat area, maintain access to the existing building, try to avoid a lot of the topography option. And, and then the one criteria it really doesn't meet is not being close to here. Just trying to figure that out, because this is really the only spot you can inherit on, like inhabit on that flat without blocking this entirely and.
And we did look at a road.
It gets long.
It's like hugged that way. But we ended up pushing up into that hillside to be able to get enough parking and stuff around it and started digging into that hill, which is what we're trying to avoid as much as possible with this option. The other thing is, is that, so now you end up, oh, sorry. You end up with maybe some of your public parking here, but you've gotta drive through that public parking to get to the secure parking. Which isn't necessarily ideal. There are police stations that have that, McMinville has that, but just, just the reality is it's like, they actually have also a second way in off of the main drag, so you don't control, doesn't have to use that public parking. What else about this one?
Um, let's see. It's, I mean, it meets the one story issue, but like you said, it's, it disconnects a lot. I don't know if there's anything else about this one. We talked about the daylighting challenges with this one, not being able to get the north light with this orientation.
And the width on this is like sixty feet?
This one's seven.
Or.
This one's sixty-two, sixty also.
So very long building out.
Yeah.
Okay. So last one was, architects always have to have a pine and sky option. What happens if we're able to get rid of this first? So what is that, what are we able to do with that? And one of the key things about this is.
This one's the right one.
One of the key issues and one of the things that we talked about early on was trying to establish protected use so that staff can have use to daylight and natural environment without worrying about being shot up throughout the day. And with the notion that this, the project is kind of surrounded by a public zone, except for, you know, some of the surveyors here, there is no real back door, as we talked about earlier. So could we do a very narrow band that comes around, but leaves a protected courtyard in the middle where they can cross across and connect that one? The other notion was that if we're going from a two-story building where everyone's on top of each other, because the square footage is so tight, there, in that situation, there's inherent cross collaboration because you can't help but trip over each other. When you go to a building that's much bigger, now you've gotta worry about where you're opportunity to see people and connect to people. If this central court is all sort of open and glassy, because you can do that from a protective standpoint, then people have to use across this courtyard to know what things are happening, where people are, what to do about.
Where do they go with that little box that is their building?
Across, outside, I approve.
I see. So this is just fun.
Well, it, it is and it isn't, because there, when we, we have the constraints that we have, this is an inherent challenge. But if they could go someplace else and that's something that you know your city better than we do about what's available, could go someplace else, is that an option? So our challenge was to say, I mean, none of these are, are quite perfect yet. It's, it's opportunity for us to put the priorities in front of you, or put the options in front of you and test the priorities. So if we really wanted to maximize an option and see what the land can do without the constraints of that building, what can we do? Is that solution worth chasing down, trying to do with that?
So where would secure parking be?
Right, so this one, the notion was that you could be able to use the grade more and come down and, and you can have secure parking here, public parking here, and then potentially have patrol underneath.
I think this one also uses public parking above the park.
For that.
Yes.
So this one actually has public parking here and secure parking here and potential for patrol to be under here out of cover, which that's a little bit, that's where it's easier, patrol's sort of. The other challenge with this one is it's an often big footprint to try and fit on our site. So inherently, this one ended up digging in a little bit and overhanging a little bit this way, which is not quite right. But it was an option to test.
And then, and the likelihood that it would rain here, what do you, what do you do with all this?
In the middle, all this depends on what.
Yes, pretty much. Covered walkways and pavilions.
Well, this area inside with all the incoles, so if you have a continuous loop of circulation all the way around.
Right, what you were saying for crossing.
For crossing, if you wanted to cross, cross, you'd walk on the outside.
A day's like this?
Yeah. On days where it's not. On days where it's not, you'd walk around the square.
Covered, covered, yeah, okay. That's all I'm having, inside the building.
I think the broader notion was that on the outside, you'd be able to do your pine windows all the way around, so you've got your daylighting and you've got your security aspect without having to spend a whole lot of money on ballistic glazing and things like that around the outside. And this side is protected, so that.
It's a core area.
Right. So I just ask, because each time we've heard a different plan from different engineers and such, that everything we see is always on a sunny day.
I, I grew up in southeast Alaska, I, I get the rainy day.
Okay, all right.
I have two, two questions.
Yes.
First, what do you guys think of this, about how your operations are?
This particular building?
Yes.
I really don't like that handle over the edge, that's currently what we have now. Disrespect for our.
Is that right?
Is that because?
It looks like the Pentagon. So it's square.
It's square, that's not bad.
But I, I do like the features of, of all the windows, you know, along the outside for the daylight, and then the courtyard in the middle, I do like that feature on this. But the problem is, we have to move to another location to build this, and that's gonna take a lot of money. That's just add, I mean, it's gonna be additional costs that aren't currently budgeted in for the project. And we did do a inquiry just with CenturyLink on, what if we take the movie dispatch center? That's quarter million dollars.
Oh.
One way. Then you gotta move it back in again.
What would happen if you left this building and built around it and then moved into this and then built the left side?
Our challenge is that if we're building around it, we have to maintain its functionality and access. So getting them there, getting them to be able to use this alley port, bring them prisoner, that's the, that's about.
The other concern too is when you phase construction, it's already more expensive to build up at the coast, being more remote, getting the crews out here. You have to get each crew out here twice to do the same, the same function. It's better to build it all once, it's gonna be cheaper.
And again, displaying my ignorance, do you have to have a single building? I mean, what's the difference between having that spread out in a single building versus two buildings?
You're thinking that if we'd left this place?
Or, I mean, because we've got land here, and, and I've just wondered, is there a proximity issue? I mean, if, if I've got a building here and a building here, what's the difference if they just don't have the same hallway?
I guess that's your walking outside issue.
So by example.
A lot of it would depend on the functionality of those two buildings. So instead, so instead of larger building that needs to meet those essential building code functions, ain't gonna be building two?
Well, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, no, no, no.
But if you're gonna have public meeting rooms, dispatch, I mean, how often do you go into dispatch? And how often do you go into?
Multiple.
Okay, but, okay, that's my ignorance, but is there, are there certain things that can just, that have to be within that? So we can work around some of these issues?
Probably the community room would be about, yeah, really, to, to separate. I mean, if you were gonna separate a piece of that, those programs out, that would probably be the logical one. So I think the community room is fifteen, sixteen, hundred square feet, something like that. So you have, but you'd still have to build that to essential building standards, because that's also your emergency.
And all the storage has to be.
There's certain storage that needs to be in with that.
Certain storage, things like traffic cones and things like that, those could be a shed around the back of sites, and that's what we're doing. We've got a small chunk of traffic flares, bikes, certain bicycles, things like that could be, off in the back, you know, need to be essential to some of it. But it's not nearly as much as I think is my thing. Because one of the earliest things was, when you have a site like this versus having one long, long, which tries to navigate that grade, it's easier to have a series of smaller things that step that grade. It's like salad champers, right? The reality is, is that if we start to segment parts of this program into different pieces, you have the connection issue between the two that you have to deal with. And because we're potentially putting them on different levels, we have to be responsible to ADA, so then all the connections have to be two and twelve at their steepest. So for every one foot of grade change, you go twelve feet. So to get from, by now, this is one thing we're starting on, to get from here to here is three hundred and sixty feet around.
Three forties.
So obviously, if you mitigated that, you could get smaller. The second thing is, is that you may have people working in different buildings, and that starts to create isolation within the agency, right? You've got different people working in different aspects, and I'm over here in building A and David's over here in building C, and I only see him every once in a while. And so when you're trying to keep a certain cohesion in terms of an organization, you kinda want everyone to be in the same boat.
Currently, our interaction within our building is, is, is constant, and it doesn't matter whether it's patrol interacting with detectives to get information and assist with cases, we'll talk about case, um, our records and dispatch, it's a constant flow from patrol and detectives into their paperwork, either turning it in or retrieving it for additional investigations. Our dispatch is also responsible eighteen hours a day for the front, the front desk and reception, and, and records function. And so when you start trying, and evidence, so when you start trying to pull any piece of that puzzle out, it just creates more downtime for the individuals who are trying to get their work done. So I, I agree with the chief. I mean, if you were seriously thinking about an option of splitting something off, you only want it even, well, that makes sense in, in my experience with the EOC, community room. And, and for what, for the other purpose that I think we intended to create that space in our building, I think that takes that away from us as well, when we talk about public interaction with our person.
So, okay, this is the same square footage as that?
Yeah.
How much, sorry, I'm gonna, this will be my last question, because I'm wasting my time. Is, as we're talking about possibly demolishing that one prior to, can this be modular, where this could be done, that could be in, and then finish that direction?
Well, this one can be built without having to test this.
Oh, I thought we had an issue with.
No, it's only this one.
Okay, all right, all right.
So the other ones, this one will work from the, from the construction access thing. And then that one.
This one will work just tighter, less conveniently.
And you do not like this one anyway, right?
There's a lot of things that we like.
Yeah, this is A and B, one is in front and one is behind.
Just the fact that it overhangs and.
One is, like, you know, if we can avoid. People on here.
Guys, I'm sorry, just one thing, we're, we're getting inside conversations here, so we need to kind of talk to each other.
And then this one would be, assuming you don't get these, or you don't wanna pursue trying to get any of these, trying to make a similar option work.
What, a friend creates a safer, more secure.
I would say that actually, of the two, if we were able to, then, again, this is outside of our program, but if we were able to get a parking, public parking up here, can direct to access to the street without the parcels in the way, this one gets the greatest separation between where the public is, and this is easy to sort of control and fence off, and then this is all secure. So of the, if, if we were to, our recommendation, our preference would be to try and push for this. But again, control of those properties, I think, is what the, what the initial issue is, and we don't wanna give you something, an option that doesn't work. So this was our sort of max variation of that, which still does, gives us two separate areas, but stays out of those properties.
Then the question is with, with one to the back.
Yeah.
What does that do to the property values of those lots? Does it improve them or? Yeah, I mean, you've got these three lots forty feet deep, say, in Brooklyn. That's what I'm saying, is, is if you put them there, it just becomes kind of useless to someone to build a home, maybe you don't.
Oh, they're buildable.
No, they're buildable.
I mean, my, my, I would love to see, that would be a great place for temporary housing for city employees, you know, if there's something up there. But I'm just asking, if, if it's gonna be useless, it's, it's not our land, right? Then it kind of becomes easy for them in a domain kind of thing. You're not gonna get anything out of this anyway.
I guess, you know, my feeling about these lots is if somebody does decide to build on one of them, then you've got, you've got a home this far away. I mean, if you're talking about security, you've got homes that are like right here, you know, and, and to me, that's, that's as much of a threat maybe as the, well, opposite storage unit maybe, but I mean, it's, it's that proximity.
But, but what if you use the mayor's idea, and what if those are city employees of temporary housing?
That'd be perfect for officers.
Maybe that wouldn't have that same feel, right? Because they're, they'd be getting a, a benefit by being able to live.
Of course, they couldn't call it sick.
See, no.
We can't do that.
But you're still, that doesn't save any money, because you're still, whether it's housing by city, it's still public, you'd have to find to do something. Which adds to, and that's kind of, is that what, that's one of the concerns of these layouts.
Well, what we don't wanna do is, is choose an option that, that has a timeline, basically. Whatever it takes for you to potentially purchase those properties and, or condemn them, or whatever the, the process is, if you really wanted that.
It wouldn't be dependent on that, right? It's an idea of how to use them best. And if you gotta get through it.
Purchase them and keep the option that.
The, if I, I'm hearing of these two, when you place this building, you have secured parking out front, which the negative is, your public view is a secure parking.
Right, I think what we.
Have we seen attractive, secure parking?
We're gonna have a very careful landscape.
Of course.
Part of our rules. I think the thing is, is that the public presence of this building is actually not this.
No, I understand, but, you know, I have a, I have a mall, I have the, you know, everything coming, people come through, and, and if I remember right, this is a dirt, a gravel road. Not a lot of traffic comes down here, right? So.
That is the advantage of putting it up front as well, the building serves as a screen for the security.
It certainly buys the site.
And it would be really neat to see it, to be able to see it.
From these stuffs like roads.
And even from that.
And from night.
Yeah, it does have a good corner.
So now, appeal.
Or you're presenting.
Appeal wise, this probably has the best, what I've heard. Appeal-wise, this probably has the best, what I've heard, and also, then you'd have security back here. Was the downfall of this only during construction? Or, or does it, does it remain?
It all depends about how close.
How close you get it up? And that's conditioned on who owns this lot?
I mean, you have.
Do we own that?
You own right here.
Up to here.
Okay, so there's one.
So somebody could potentially build something.
So can we ask Dave your question? So for construction, you need all kinds of forklifts and cranes and, and excavation equipment and that kind of thing, so, and these guys need to get to work every day. And so how, how does that work?
Yeah.
On that corner, how, how, how does it work?
Yeah, I appreciate that. To me, my instinct and my experience tells me, this one's the less expensive option in terms of being out of the way for means and methods of building this building back here. There's a couple other challenges that, you know, these guys already expressed. This one becomes expensive because of the logistics of working hand in hand with a PD to keep them, make, and just that logistical challenge is gonna cost time and money. The schedule's gonna be longer, which, you know, for every month, the GC's gonna be out there, think about in terms of an eighty thousand dollars, just as an upper, my instinct, that's how much money that costs just for the professional staff. But all of that monkeying around with this will be more expensive, it takes away from some of the, the building, the dollars, the bang for the buck in the building. You know, so anyway, that's just kinda the reality of it, because you have to keep the PD operational. You know, so this one, to me, throws away, you know, there's some other challenges that we discussed around getting access to the public space there and having the opportunity to use them or, you know, get those parcels, if that means putting the project on pause for a while. You know, his, he, you know, you heard Ian talk about, we don't want to affect the timeline. To me, if that's, if you're not spending any money right now for the general contractor to be on board, you know, once construction starts, game is on, the meter's running. So now, you know, so the flip side of that is?
The more you delay, the more you deal with escalation.
True, however, have?
The more you do.
The more, the longer you wait, the more you deal with the escalation of costs.
So can I ask you a question about those three parts?
Just material, just material escalation economy.
Goods and materials, the economy.
It's gone, it's gone up significantly just in the last year.
You know, generally, people, CMGCs will say point five percent per month for, for an escalation, and they'll carry that through, just as kind of the trend. Yeah, point, point five percent's a good rule though.
Do either of you know who the owners are of those three lots?
Not off the top of my head, but we have that information, not like county records.
So I have a question. So if the delay, the expense of the delay is equal to the cost of the property, would it be more attritional to look at purchasing the property?
If you can get something for your money?
Well, then, some of the early thoughts about the park is that some of that road could be improved, right?
We already put the sewer problem up here.
Okay.
Well, and, one of the thoughts was, we could extend it, right now it comes to a dead end, and there is a landlocked block that has no access, so bringing this up, maybe turning it to actually connect Third Street at the north end would provide another means of access. And, and it would also, you know, open, open it up even more at the parks, opening the park up to the public in the neighborhood is a good thing.
So I, so the other option with this one, too, cost-wise, is the street improvement somewhere, does that fall, is that Park's budget, is that this project's budget? So that's another thing to consider, are we responsible with this budget to improve the road to a point?
Sure you would.
So that's another thing that?
Okay, this is Keel, add this.
And then the last question, I'm sure this has been answered once before, what happens to the old building?
Those are the ones.
And then what do we do with the land underneath it?
Secure parking.
That becomes your secure parking.
This is your secure parking, and you take advantage of this already being developed.
And in the meantime, where's your secure parking?
We don't have any.
We don't have any now.
Haven't had any since I did.
What do you need some now for? Come on. Get a couple geese out there.
There was a conversation about using or sharing parking with the fire station.
On a temporary.
On a temporary.
Yeah, in the short term, during construction.
So obviously, whatever model that we use, there's gonna have to be some business modifications that we have to make to accommodate the construction.
And no matter which option you choose, your current parking is impacted, because we have to build something.
You know, as far as design, for community design, having it, having this in the front and the secure parking in the back is, I mean, that's what we, what we require for commercial right, business coming in, we'd say, no, you can't have your parking in the front unless it, on the side or behind.
Straight painted down, the public restroom areas, after.
But this was still for security. It's all on its own.
None has ever used that.
The wind load.
See, can you see the?
It was a big, oh, you'd pick a tree.
It's a kind of fortress.
It's snapped in the move.
The wind finds that, that balance.
Winds.
I'm sorry to let you get something I said.
Rotation up there.
On the front here?
Then are all three of those lots necessary or?
I mean, it would be, in this option, it might be nice to have this little one up here, but you wouldn't need to mess with any of them.
I think it would be nice to have all three.
I agree. Then you have more parking.
But I think, the, the plus factor for this more on the forward one, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it's not dependent upon acquiring any of those, that's something that we can start tomorrow.
Yeah, but what?
I understand that, yeah.
But the point would be, is that you could start on this, right, without purchasing those parcels, and still go down the route.
So you weren't losing any.
And depending on where we opt with the front door, we could just have temporary parking here, and then actually end up having more public parking in that forty foot zone, or even further this way. And then this is overflow parking, and this is secure, or however you want to structure it.
So, Dave, then can you start the building on that corner?
Well, you know, what, what they're gonna do is, frankly, they're gonna fence off this area, create avenues first. First thing they're gonna do is make sure that's all locked in, to confine their space, make it safe for everybody, so it's not gonna be, you know, phased operation. They have to do that, because they have to start excavating for these, these openings back.
And people work on really tight sites in the city all the time, where they have even less clearance, so they make it work. It's just requires some coordination.
And this corner's the only entrance for everybody?
No, the public.
For the public, okay, where does the officers go in?
They'd be coming through back here, because they're parking back here.
Okay, seems silly to come in and run to that corner all the time.
Plus, on this option, we also have the drive-through Sallyport as well for bringing in our custody's and exiting the building.
And that one's when you have a drive-through.
So there'd be a separate secure entrance down below, the public entrance up above, which is pretty nice.
So there, just a couple of things, this one has, this has more excavation to do, so less moving dirt, I mean, this has more excavation, I said that wrong, more excavation here, because like we had said, digging into that.
This is just a steeper hill.
This is a steeper hill here, less, however, there's some utilities that are existing, buried, you know, you'll have to get, you know, either way, you're gonna have those some, or some kind of restation back there.
Do those utilities go to the?
The existing building.
Yeah, so you have to keep those alive, or relocate them in order to keep the building.
So you just move them up?
Well, there's, yeah, there's multiple ways of doing that, but you have to keep it going.
Actually, yeah. So there's a pump station on our property, too, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Stephanie or Lila as far as if that services anything else other than the place. And that's what, so, does that mean, does it have to stay there, or can it be moved as part of the construction? And at what cost?
That's public work, of course.
That's not what we're going for, but.
I know what she's thinking.
Yes, I do.
Well, for me, I guess, based on what, like Dever was saying, too, is that, you know, when you're driving in, I think, Dick, you were saying this, too, that you have a public building that people are greeted by rather than parking on it. And we're trying to do something wonderful and cool with this building besides it just being a bunch of empty rooms.
You know, I do like the presence of this option, I mean, so coming down here, that's the first thing, is, is the parking lot.
I'll just throw my two cents in, and I'm being sincere in this, I don't care. I really don't care if it's that pleasant. It's, it's a place of business, some serious business. It'd be nice if it looked all, gosh, isn't that a place I wanna go have dessert? I don't care. I want it to be a police department.
Let me introduce you to our plan. And are you guys, we're talking about design?
Yeah.
Businesses?
It's all.
No, it's not, that is a police department. I wanted to do one thing.
There is a kitchen.
Remember the back door? That ain't gonna be as nice, because the people that come in through the back door, you're right then, they don't care about that. But the people coming in the front, they used to do their nine-to-five business and stuff, we do care about these people.
Well, okay.
There's also a community round.
Yeah, you have your nice amenities for people who work there, but.
No, I'm not talking about people working there, I'm talking about people who come in and do business. Yeah, the people, members of the public that come in and do business, day in and day out.
What do they do there?
They generate police reports, they drop off their prescription drugs, they come and get their property, they come and get receipts for their vehicles that have been towed. There's a lot of business that comes in and forth as a general citizen.
All right, that's what I was talking about, okay. Again, I'm, I'm still in the same place, I don't care. It, it doesn't matter, it's there, it's not, they can't go, well, I don't wanna go there, it's not as nice as the other police department, I wanna go to that one.
No, 'cause they're coming to ours now, and there's nothing nice about that.
It's a monopoly, it, who cares?
Mayor, I, I understand, I understand that from a, a money efficiency fidelity standpoint, but there's two aspects of that.
Guys, we got two conversations.
There's two aspects of your comments that, that I would argue against to a certain extent on the side of the chief here, is that with our access, whatever we end up eventually calling this driveway past our department on tonight, there is a constant flow of our community traffic. They come off that hill, make that turn, go up to the post office and community center. In addition to our officers, many of them that are brand new to the department, and we are still trying to recruit here. And to me, the presentation of whatever we end up with here needs to be something that our community is proud of, our members are proud to come by and invite other officers or invite our agency partners, when they arrive, to say, man, I wish that I worked for Lincoln City and Lincoln City Police Department. Ian said it in his presentation a few weeks ago, we're not asking for the Taj Mahal, but it, it needs to be functional like you say it is, and, and utilitarian in that way, but I think it needs to be, if we're gonna spend the money to make this work, we're looking for, it also needs to be something that our community is proud of, and so however it looks on the exterior, it needs to meet those both expectations, in my mind.
I'd say, Dever, with that, if the public building, we need to be proud of it for a lot of reasons. Especially to draw and keep police officers, you know, where it's been, we need to keep them.
We'll be moving city halls down, right?
Yep.
This place is a dump. We do city halls, too. I wanted it there, too.
So I was asking, I was asking if we could bring the building this way, and the only reason that we can't is because we don't own this lot. So if we could buy this lot, if we could move it this way, and then have plenty of room to get around it.
Don't you have a selection fund?
What would we do, we got five million, so?
Well, it's not very expensive.
According to the county assessor, it's just a.
Yeah. Conversation in executive.
Five or six thousand dollars is what the county has assessed the property at, five or six thousand dollars, so it's a drop in the bucket. Now, that may be before we put in the water and sewer, maybe it's more expensive, but it's not gonna be that much more expensive, you know, so.
I'm, I'm for the front, I'd like to pursue the front.
Now, do we have to give you official feedback, you just can't look at work?
Well, if you can give us general guidance, and we report to the chief at this point, so if the chief, if you can give general guidance to the chief, and he can give us direction, then we can, our next step is to develop whichever option you give preference for, in a more refined way to get us to where we can go.
Good way, maybe better.
Okay.
This is one B.
One B, yeah. The back lot is less expensive to develop, because we don't have to worry, unless we get that second lot?
Yeah, yeah, there's some.
Because then we can move that forward, right?
Right, there's some intricacies, like I said, there's some, you know, how much are we talking about? I mean, I couldn't guess, but that has more excavation, it's out of the way, it's less logistically costly to build this. This is, you know, it's an easier build, but you have some logistical challenges because of the, like I said, keeping police department operational, that just costs money. I've done that kinda job before, it just costs money. Not like, we haven't had, our CMGC partners who are proposing this, all know how to do that. They're all very skilled at it, and they know it just takes time.
And do we actually save anything if we were extending roadway, or extending lines, or extending sewers and all that to the back building? I mean, that's gonna cost more, I mean, how many feet is that?
Well.
Isn't there already?
They don't even have roads all the way back here.
Yeah, you're still.
And that would still serve it, the way the building's outlined?
Yeah, it's still, you're still gonna have to pay for that, even here, for the cost, the nominal cost for the extension of the line, is, because here you have to, like, relocate all this stuff to keep this building occupied. So you're gonna do some relocation of existing utilities, at least one time, that you don't necessarily need to do for that building, if that makes sense. So it's a cost, just to keep this building functional, the utilities.
Chief, lieutenant, front or back? Not a huge difference for you?
I kinda like the front position, yes. Again, most, to me, that higher aesthetic, it separates our public parking from our secure parking, gives us a drive-through Sallyport, gives us a little bit more separation from the new public space that's gonna be created down there. I, I think it lends.
Then the value of the drive-through is, is quicker, rather than coming in and closing a door?
It's a little bit of risk management, so you drive straight through, you stop, unload your prisoner, and then when you wanna leave, you don't have to back out, you just go forward, you get into the parking lot. Instead of our current garage, it's one-way, you have to back up, it's a little tight in there anyway, and there's been more than one ding put on the front corner of a car, 'cause they're not careful with their front end swing.
Damage to the inside of it.
So they need to drive in less?
Well, no, they.
To be, to be fair, fire departments feel the same way, they want drive-through apparatus based, 'cause they don't like back to the races. Okay. So if it were to the back, would we want an increased dimension in the garage, the Sallyport?
So, so the inside of the Sallyport is, by diagram, is sufficient, it's wider than what we have now.
Okay.
It'll still function better with the rear.
Yes.
I'm for the back one.
So what's needed from us?
That was my question. We're getting consensus for Ian, you've got, like, four that want front, one that wants back.
Who wants back?
I want back.
Oh, you, you're the one.
Well, I just, I.
You're the one.
Because we gotta get, if we can utilize those lots some way, I don't know if we take, if we move that, that way, we've lost the use of that lot, except for that building. And I don't even know if we could use those lots for anything, if we can gain, unless we come in from another direction, which I think Dever said we could possibly go a road up to Third, right?
Well, they, they, they have access to Keel right now.
Oh, okay.
So they're, they're usable lots right now.
Okay.
If we, if we.
I'm outvoted anyways, I don't.
There's no voting, Jerry.
I'm out of consensus. Is that a word?
I don't know, it is now.
Is that it for tonight, then? Are we questions?
And not to throw a wrinkle in it, but have you taken folks to the Episcopal Church site? Granted, it's a multi-family, but.
As a potential police.
Yeah, I'm just trying, you're still quasi in the center of town.
A lot of Chicago.
Well, it is, but I'm trying to think of this. Again, I'm looking for a lot larger, flat area. Still, you know, ingressy, grass, you can go out both ways. Now, my preference is multifamily, but again, as a large enough two-acre, because we want that for wherever we put housing blocks.
There's Twenty-third Street is the, is mine, where the wheels lay rock there is. That's flat.
We don't own it.
We don't own it, no.
I mean, I was just taking.
And it would be expensive financially, because they're hoping for, you know.
Yes, yeah.
Retail, so.
So I guess to answer your question is, we've looked at other, Ron and I have had discussions possible other properties, and I think maybe Debra or Richard may have been part of some of those discussions. We really couldn't come up with anything that we currently own or have ready access to.
But I guess I'm, you know, this site though, has a lot of pieces there.
I mean, ideally, the site that I would like to have is the morning income house right around the corner.
Oh, we're in East Devil's Lake Road.
Yeah, that's my dog park, come on.
There's going to be a new one at the park though, right?
More self-storage.
Cut me off. About nice scale and flat.
It's going up on eight, so anyone, anything for the good of the group?
This was helpful, though, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, I love the visuals.
The photography helps.
Helps us too.
Sorry you have to.
If there's nothing else, then that's okay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Pleasure, thank you guys, thanks for coming in. And then just remember that the meeting's adjourned, you got a court, so don't go talking to each other.
Thank you, this is very helpful.
Yep.
They're going to want to.
My rule is to make sure.
Yes, absolutely. I think that's why we want to have this first. Have this first, and then you got.